Plymouth Town Hall, Plymouth, Massachusetts. Tonight, we are going to work on just one case of 40B, case number 4168. Right at the moment, I know this is unusual, but our secretary is trying to print off one more piece document, and she'll be down in just a minute. So I'm just going to ask for everyone to please be patient for a few minutes until she gets back here. Thank you.
We cannot operate without her.
Yeah, we can't. We definitely can't work without her. Okay, thank you for your patience. We now have the documentations that we need. I'm going to ask who is going to present this evening?
Hi. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities. Thanks again for having us here tonight. I'm going to be short and turn it over to our professionals, who will go through a handful of issues that were left over from last time, particularly related to the parking space widths and the building parapet height. So we have new graphics and updates, but I'm going to leave it to the design consultants to go through those things. And, you know, look forward to hearing more feedback on that. So as soon as the presentation gets up, Steve Morano from Bowler Engineering will come up and speak to some of the site changes that have happened over the last couple of weeks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Steve Morano with Bowler. Just wanted to, obviously, it looks very similar to the last drawing, but I'll walk you through some of the changes that we made in response to the conversation at the last hearing, and we can zoom in as needed. But in general, we heard loud and clear that there was a desire to not look at nine-foot spaces, look at 10-foot spaces throughout the property. The new plan does reflect that. All spaces are 10-foot plus. We have some move-in spaces that are a little bit wider. What that did, there was a pretty good estimate by the board, we ended up at 465 spaces. We were at 485. I think the back napkin math was 463, and we were able to get it to 465. So slightly reduced from where we were, still meets all the zoning requirements. And then when we did that change, we still have the 25-foot aisles everywhere, and we sent that to the fire department. We did truck turning radii diagrams with their fire truck maneuvering both directions around the property, and the fire department did send us a response, saying that they were good with the revised plan as drawn. So I think the change is a positive one. Again, heard loud and clear by the board, the desire to get to the 10-foot spaces and the impact we were able to make the adjustments. We did lose two garages in the process, because the garages are a little less efficient, but to get that parking count where it needed to be, we gave up a couple of garage bays. So we have 30 garage spaces instead of 40, but that reduction helped us keep the surface count up, even with the increased width. So those really are the major site plan changes. Happy to answer any questions or get into the specifics, but we have a new table on the drawings that break it down between how many of those spaces are electric vehicle charging spaces and accessible spaces, and then some move-in spaces, and also the garage spaces. So it's all broken down by category, but none of them are under 10-foot wide spaces. If there's any questions on that, otherwise, I can turn it over to Ed, and he can walk you through some of the building changes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ed Bradford from TAT Architects. And as Dave noted, we just have one exhibit for you this evening to walk through proposed changes that we've made to the building height, based on feedback that we've heard over the past couple hearings. So what this exhibit shows is two renderings. In the left-hand side is the rendering, this is a view from the roundabout, and it's showing the design as per the application, as originally submitted in the May 7 application. And then on the right, we're showing our proposed revision. So as we have talked through on a past couple hearings, as shown, starting on the left, we have measured building height according to the zoning bylaw, and that is a measurement to the roof beam, and that height is 59 feet per the original application. But then above that, items that are exempted from that zoning definition include parapet walls, and we've talked a lot about the parapet walls over the past couple hearings. So as we noted, there are two types that are shown in these exhibits, and we've discussed, there is a lower parapet wall that is continuous about the perimeter of both buildings, and then a higher parapet wall that serves more of a decorative function that we've discussed quite a bit. The low parapet wall, as we've noted and discussed, serves a couple functions. One, it serves as a screen of mechanical equipment, and it also serves as a safety barrier. And as Mr. Silver noted in the last hearing, in many cases, it's also required by the building code. Then there's the higher parapet wall, and I think Mr. Connor and others have expressed concern about that higher parapet wall. That higher parapet wall also serves the function that the lower parapet wall does. It screens equipment, it provides a safety barrier, but it also serves a decorative role. So the aspects of the height above what would serve as a safety barrier or equipment screen are really for decorative purposes, and as we discussed, we want to really make sure that we have some variation along this roof line, so we just don't have a continuous line. So again, for architectural purposes. So moving on to our proposal this evening, is the rendering that's shown on the right. So we have lowered the building height, and we've done it in a couple ways. The first is, we took a step back and looked at the building section in general, and with some careful review, we have taken out 18 inches out of the building section. So that would affect the building height per the zoning definition. So that would lower the building height per the zoning definition from 59 feet to 57 foot six inches, so a reduction of 18 inches, as measured per the zoning bylaw. But again, a lot of the conversation we've had, and a lot of the feedback we've heard over the past couple hearings from many folks, has been the decorative feature at the corner. So that's the one where we've really taken a hard look and lowered that substantially. So that we've lowered by another 30 inches. We still have that corner parapet feature a short distance above the base parapet wall, because again, we're looking for some variation. But we do agree that the variation does not need to be so great. So I think you can see in the rendering on the right, some articulation along that roof line, but less so compared to our original application. So all in, there's a reduction of four feet in the building height, as what's really important, as you perceive the building visually. That's our proposal for the building height change. Happy to take any of your questions.
Just give me the numbers.
Yeah, so we're...
Actual numbers.
So we're lowering the building by four feet, measured to the highest point?
No. What your number was before was 67?
59.
That's right. Yeah, we're going from 67 down to 63.
Okay. That's what I want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael, anything?
No, I'm all set.
All right. I talked to the building inspector today, okay? I am not happy with any variation in the parapet wall, and in reality, you would have to fly an airplane over it to really see all of the equipment. I've built hundreds of parapet walls. I've built, I've worked all my life on big buildings. That parapet wall, all the way around, shouldn't be any higher than four feet from the flattest part of the roof, not from the top of the curb or anything. If there's a curb on that building, the curb has got to be part of the parapet wall, and I don't believe it should be any higher than four feet anywhere. There are so few people that are going to look up there and say, oh, that's horrible, because that air conditioner, you can see the very top of it. It's just, I'm saving you money. Think about it that way. I'm making your project more thrifty, and in doing so, I'm keeping the town happy, I'm keeping everybody happy. So take that as a suggestion, because we're trying to wrap this up this evening.
If I understood your comment, you were saying the parapet wall shouldn't be higher than four feet above the roof? That is what we're proposing.
Pardon me?
That is what we're proposing. The parapet wall, the continuous parapet wall that surrounds the building is four feet.
With no variation in height, with no variation in height.
We have the 18-inch variation just on the corner.
No variation in height. It doesn't need it. I'm saving you money. Come on. No, the parapet wall is fine, because there's two features for a parapet wall, and one of them nobody ever talks about, and that's safety. And that parapet wall is there to protect people that are working on that equipment.
Yes.
And to keep stuff from rolling off and falling on bystanders down below and everything. It's a functional part of the roof line, but it doesn't need to be varied, in my opinion. Now, we'll let the board decide that, but...
Yeah, I mean, if you compare the two renderings, what we've done at the corners is we've dropped it dramatically. So there's a very subtle variation between the lower and the upper, very subtle.
You know how I feel.
So... The way, in the new drawing, that thing on the end there is how much higher than the other wall?
18 inches.
18 inches higher?
Yeah.
And that's primarily for aesthetics, I think you...
Yeah.
Because as an architect, you don't think it looks good straight?
Yeah, we're trying to minimize the effect of a contiguous box, right? So we agree that the contrast we were showing until this evening was too great, so we're looking to reduce it. We think quite a bit, but we would like some, even a little bit of articulation along that roof line.
And that is really just noticeable from one end, right?
It's just at the corners and just at the outside corner. In fact, that's a sloping corner. In fact, that's a sloping parapet, so it's really, it's very, very short, very limited perimeter of the building, yes.
No, I, yeah, I'm, you know, I've been kind of troubled from the beginning with five floors and that height. And we've heard, I've heard from several people that, that why would you build something so high? These aren't skyscrapers. And, and I understand, I, I take Michael's point that the more we can do, and I appreciate the fact that you've actually shaved a little off each floor height, is that what you did?
Yeah.
To reduce that of it?
Yeah.
But you seem to be stuck on that angle. Take off your architect hat and put on just a common guy's hat. It doesn't matter. Thank you.
Kevin?
I, I don't have a problem with, with it as it is now. I think chopping it down makes a big difference, but again, not some, not a hill I'm going to die on here.
Tom, you got anything?
Yeah, I think what we're talking about is beauty being any higher than beholden. That's really what we're talking about.
And I don't think it's beauty.
I, I heard that clearly. And so I'm just going to ask you very simply, is, is this, what's the, what, give me a hard reason or is it really just the perception of beauty?
Yeah, it's, it's an aesthetic concern that, as I said, it's, it's, it's that simple. You know, the, these, the building could appear a bit boxy without some, just minor adjustment to the roof line. And that's what we're proposing, a minor adjustment to the roof line.
All right, so if I said to everybody watching at home and sitting here, we look at the two pictures, the one on the left is what you're proposing, and the one on the right is what we're kind of pushing for. And it really is just a matter of.
The one on the, on the left.
The right is the.
Yeah, the old is the new version. Is the new version, yeah, but it's still just a little bit higher.
Yep.
Yeah.
18 inches.
18. I, I like, I like the one on the right. I'm happy with it.
We do too.
The way it looks. But, but again, we, we consider what we do here has ongoing ramifications. And so that's one of the issues that, that we wrestle with as well. But quite frankly, yeah, I'm, I'm not unhappy with the, with the one on the right.
I'm with Kevin on it. I'll tell you right now, I, I don't think it's, I mean, you look at the, it does make a difference, so I'm glad they did it. But to be honest with you, I mean, I'd like to take a whole floor, we're not going to do that. They do have the, but like I say, I, I think I'm far, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Peter?
Yeah. I, I, I don't like it. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think no matter what you do, it looks like anything but a big box. If you could put a steeple on it, to me, it's still going to look like a big box. But, but I, like Kevin said, I don't know that it's a hill worth dying on, you know, I could get this thing over with.
Okay. What's next?
That's all for me.
You're going to get, it, it, it sounds like the board is willing to give you that small space 18 inches higher, but I, I want a real diagram of that on the plan. I want it spelled right out because all of a sudden, 18 inches is not going to go 70, 80, 90 feet. And if we don't nail it down, then, you know, it's interpretation. I want it nailed down, please.
Oh, we will fully define it in the drawings, yes.
Okay, let's move on. The draft decision. Are there things?
Well, do we have more questions for them? I do have a question for them on one thing was.
Yeah, we should do the waivers too.
On the, on the plan there, S K one and S K two that were on, you'll ask the middle. What's the difference between those two?
Ben, you want to ask?
Ben LaFrance with Hawk Design. The only difference between those is simply scale. One shows a little bit larger of an area, one zooms in a little bit more on the side.
That's what I was trying to determine. They look the same to me.
Literally the only difference. It just shows a little bit larger of the surrounding area.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, because that's what I was trying to figure out. I said, geez, they look exactly the same, so.
One's, one inch equals 50, one's one inch equals 30. So just gives you more of the whole picture of the surroundings.
And then, do you want the explanation on the parking spaces?
Yes.
From them?
Yes.
Well, then, boy, for asking.
We're, I want to go through all of them. Okay, so let's, why don't we just start with the, going from the beginning?
On these, this latest version of the board?
Yes. Yes. And on that page B1, is there? Has everybody got the waivers in, the latest edition of the waivers in front of them?
Is it in here?
Yes, they're in there. I think they're like the last three or four pages.
Easy, all right.
Yeah. Okay, and, and it starts with page B1. Is there anything on page B1 in the waivers that troubles anybody?
Carolyn, you've looked, you've reviewed this?
These are from her.
This is from you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. The draft decision has been, it has been mutually, you know, revised, but the version you have as of today, I think about 3 o'clock this afternoon, that is the most recent version with any revisions or comments that I made.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question for you, Denise. Are these the same? These are the same, the copy, the paper copy is the same as our digital?
No. It is?
Okay.
From 3 o'clock this afternoon?
Yes.
The digital ones that you got on 8/11 or not?
Oh, no.
Correct.
The 8/11 agenda.
I sent an email today right after town.
Yeah, the 3 o'clock email.
Yeah. So you're better off going through these.
Mr. Chair, if I might also, the waivers that are in the decision as of today is the same document that the applicant submitted dated August 6th of last week. So it's just, the August 6th one might be a little bit easier to read than the small print type in the draft decision.
Okay, thank you. And by, when I, I am looking at these now, but all the waivers that I looked at and were discussing with you, the town is satisfied that Beals and Thomas's issues have been resolved? Is that correct?
I, I certainly don't want to speak for, you know, if there's any town department out there that might have any concerns, but anything that Beals and Thomas raised in their report as of last week has been built into this decision as a condition for approval.
Okay, okay.
I think they're actually the, the last set, if you will, of, it's, it's kind of mixed in under general conditions and also under stormwater, but they are all incorporated in the draft you have.
Okay, good, good.
So on that, on that one, because I'm looking on what, easier up here, believe it or not. So I did have a question, okay, so on the, on the first page, you do have, on the sign that you want the waiver for, it says illumination of signs. None of these are internally lit, correct?
No. Sort of either uplighting or the building signs that are shown on this.
Yeah, so the, the lighting for the monument sign that's shown on the plans is uplighting. It's not internally illuminated. And then the signs on the building, we would expect to be like halo lighting, so it's not like a, a close, it's not.
Okay, I'm just making sure because we don't allow illuminated, I wouldn't give you permission for that, I can tell you that. Okay.
No, boy. All right, the second page, is there any?
Yes, yes, sir. Just the obvious typo on 203-7.
Yes.
Where you took out the 10 by, it says 10 by 8, not 10 by 18. Just want to make sure that we don't miss that.
All right. One clarification, if I may, on, on this waiver. The 40 detached parking garage basis is actually 30 detached. We reduced the two garage buildings, and then the 385 by 10 by 18 should be 395. So just wanted to clarify that for the note.
I don't see it on hand now. I ain't got a B2 on this one. Of course I'm missing B2. I'm always missing something.
It's sticking to the other page.
I'm, I'm sitting here saying, all right, yeah, I see it. Yes, so that that typo is fixed. Very good. All right, is there anything else on? I can get them on there, but those weren't the 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah. This is the email from today.
Watch this. I haven't even opened an email from 3 o'clock today. Boy, I hate these things. I'm sorry, we're, we're caught between some paper and some, no, this should be, see, here's, here's the new email that I hadn't, didn't even know was here yet. Where is it? There it is.
Keep going.
Okay, now I got them. Now, this is the decision.
They're attached to the bottom of the decision.
Never mind, I'm going to read it. Is there, so what are we on?
B3.
B3, is there anything on B3 that?
Down the bottom, dimensional table, which is setback, how many feet? I'm sorry. The dimensional table requested waiver, which are setback blank feet. This is referring to the accessory structures that were within setbacks now. So we've got the garages, we're going to have to remeasure those on, so as close as 10 feet for some of the accessory garages. Okay, you're going to have to be really close to that mic. It's not picking it up all that well for everybody.
Good evening, Kevin Goggan with Goulston Stores, one post office square on behalf of the.
About 10 feet, you said?
That's correct. The closest, and that's for the accessory structures, the garages on the perimeter of the property. The main principal structures all comply with the setbacks.
Okay, I need, I'm trying to get them right now. I don't have a B4. What's B4 there?
Yeah. There is one. We're going by the overall line.
So there were, there was a, on the very first one.
You have B4?
I get.
I don't have B4.
No, neither do I in my packet, but.
Okay. It's at the bottom of the decision that you've got to scroll down. I've got the online one. Yeah. Look at that. Yeah.
Boy, I'm, I'm not happy with this at all.
What? The computer?
Yeah, it, I mean, come on.
I know.
This is stupid.
Do you want to share this?
I want, I want to be able to read something. What's this?
Keep going down. It says you.
All right, there's two.
B3. There's four. There's four.
All right, B4, I see.
I'm missing two.
That's three.
There's four right there.
Mm-hmm. I had it. All right, and I don't.
Well, we just discussed the height.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could just ask on that one on height, so to clarify, we're going to put in, is it 67 feet? Is that?
No, the build, the building height by the code, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, will be 57 and a half feet.
57.
Because that's the building code, the building code is to the top of the roof beam, so that's 57 and a half. It doesn't, the definition for building height doesn't include the parapets, but will include the parapets as shown on the plan, so it's crystal clear to everybody what this board saw.
So it's going to end up around 62 feet, 61 feet?
I think that the main parapet height is 61 and a half as shown up there, and then at those individual corners, it goes up to 63, and that's four feet lower than the max height it was last time.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm all set. That's where the ice cream shop.
All right, let's go to page 5. And I see that on the water supply, there's been a little change. Any problems with that with anybody?
I don't think I, well, I was going to probably wait till the draft. Yeah, actually, I'll wait till we discuss it.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Carolyn, your comment on D there, as the revised location's been approved by the fire chief, is that okay now? Are you asking that right now?
I, I think we just heard earlier tonight that the fire chief has reviewed revised plans. I'm not sure though if that includes the location of fire hydrants.
Yeah, he talked about the roadways and stuff.
Right.
So is the fire chief's comments acceptable? Is he?
Yes, well, do you want me to just comment? We don't know explicitly whether or not the fire chief has signed off on the hydrant locations, but he didn't comment it in his letter. That makes sense.
Well, if he hasn't, he hasn't.
But certainly if we needed a condition that said the applicant will review the fire hydrant locations with the fire chief prior to the construct, start of construction, we'd be happy to do that.
Somehow we got a condition that, that the fire chief has the last say of where the placement of those fire hydrants are. Is that possible, Carolyn?
We do have, I'm just looking for, we do have a condition that addresses the fire chief's concern, so I think I would, I think it is under infrastructure, if I remember.
Okay. All right. Okay. So you want to go through that draft decision now? So, you want to go through that draft decision now, Michael?
Condition, proposed condition 37 of the fire department conditions, so we could add a new subparagraph D.
That's the, page 13 on what you sent us today? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Fire department condition?
Yep.
Okay.
And your hydrant spacing is not changed, you're just relocating, so you'll still be less than 500 feet?
That's correct.
We're gonna do it this way, we're gonna go page by page through this draft decision for the board's review. So, have you got it scrolled up?
Yeah.
All right, I have the paper copy that came out, I believe, today. And so, we're gonna go right to page three. Is there anything on page three that is concerning? You got a copy of it right in paper.
That's good.
Okay. I guess there's none, so let's try page five. Any concerns?
So.
Why is that?
Well, we go from number one looks like to number three.
Yeah, I didn't have a number one, but I got a number three, and then it went from three to, this is hard.
Mr. Chair, I don't.
From three to five.
I don't know if all of your hard copies, but the one hard copy we have is missing the even pages.
Yeah. So is mine.
Yeah, so is mine.
Yes. So, that's what we're, go and do.
It's correct on the email that we received today.
Okay, so let's.
So, I think.
Look at that email and throw this away. Yeah. Now, we're getting there. There's gotta be a better damn way. All right.
So, what page are you guys up to now?
Let's see about page two, is there anything on page two that is concerning anybody? You gotta do it on the computer, Tom, because that.
Yeah, page two.
It's printed double sided on.
Double sided.
Yeah, we don't.
Special.
He's special.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, guys.
No problem.
Is there anything on page two concerning? Page three? It's just procedural history and so on and so forth? And on page four, list of the plans set forth in the attached exhibit, is that okay? You all set with that, Carolyn?
Yes, where, that has to be revised based on, obviously, the discussion this evening, so that'll be revised and then inserted as exhibit B.
Okay. Page five, anything on page five, there's no corrections or anything here? All right, conditions of approval, here we go. The conditions of approval, condition number one is just the comprehensive permit stuff. In the decision hereby grants, the first paragraph, the last paragraph above administrative condition approvals, it says decision, and you've got the word grants highlighted?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's just to flag that for me, because I don't know until you actually vote whether you approve or deny, so it's highlighted, so I make sure to go back and make sure it accurately captures your vote tonight.
You know, if these two women weren't here, we'd be in big trouble.
That's true of life.
I don't want to admit that. All right, so, let us go to page six, is there anything on page six? It's all administrative stuff? It's all conditions that are actually guaranteed by the comprehensive permit, is that?
Exactly, most of the administrative findings or conditions are fairly boilerplate. In fact, this was based off this board's approval of the Oasis comprehensive permit, so it mimics that.
Mm-hmm, so, we don't have to do anything until, look at anything until page eight? There's seven, I mean.
I got a question on seven.
Go right ahead, Michael.
Okay, on page seven, Carolyn, on number 14, where it says, you know, "For the affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity as long as the project does not conform to town zoning by law." Now, here's where I have a question on, or the longest period allowed by law, whichever is longer. What that statement, once I said or, can you explain that to me?
So, that is fairly standard language that we use in comprehensive permits to capture everything. The intent is obviously, especially where these are rental units, that they remain affordable in perpetuity. There is obviously, you know, built into a 40B is the fact that this project does not conform to zoning. At basic level, multifamily units would not be allowed in this particular zoning district. So, as long as the project does not conform to zoning as well, you know, we can change this any way you like, but the intent is to make sure that if at some point, even if Plymouth were to change their zoning and allow multifamily use here, such that this would now be a use allowed by rider in conformance with zoning, we still have our affordable housing deed restriction that would apply to it.
It protects that.
So, they're still, they're still gonna be perpetual?
And it's also some holdover language from some older 40Bs, I'd say back in the day, but, you know, it wasn't all that long ago where some of these did not survive foreclosure, for example. It's not a problem here where we're dealing with rental units, or even some older deed riders might have had, say, a 30-year limitation for the affordability. We're covering all of our bases to say from now until the end of time, by whatever version or whatever happens with the regulations or zoning, that this 25% of these units shall remain affordable.
Okay, yeah, because I was just wondering when it says whichever is longer, I'm saying, well, my understanding, once they went in, they aren't coming out.
Well, and one might say, what is longer than in perpetuity? And it might just be, you know, lawyer speak at that point, but that is the intent, that it's a belt and suspenders, that this is not coming off the SHI.
Okay.
On 11, I just want to confirm that the numbers, the numbers are where we're at. We're not changing the number of units or anything.
We just had one comment on that as well, if we may. If you see in condition 11, fourth line down, after 25%, it says or 114. I believe that 114 should be changed to 75, because that refers back to the number of units. I think the 114 might go to the total bedrooms, so I think it just needs to be 75 for the total units, not the bedroom count.
Jesus.
So, 75, not 114?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, we've done page seven and page eight. Go right ahead.
Carolyn, on page eight, number 19. There's a little confusion down this end. I guess the newest email is a
Page J is.
Much, yeah, on page eight, number 19.
I don't have a 19 on.
Well, here, you can look at this one if you want.
This is relative to as-built plans.
What's that?
It refers to the as-built plans.
Right. We just wanted, for clarification on that, first of all, I'm not sure which one of those two we're using, because the email this afternoon had many more lines to it, but I wonder if at the end, we could add something about in hard copy and digital form acceptable to as-built?
We do include the format up above. If you look at paragraphs 17 and 18, paragraph 17, we're asking for, and this came from Lee Hartman this afternoon, but of course, the board can change this if you like. We asked for one full set, one set of full-size and one set of reduced plans, 17 by 17 inches, in addition to a digital copy of the final endorsed plan set.
I'm saying on the as-built. Yeah, that's not the as-built, though, is it? That's the original plans, I think he's talking about.
We could certainly add, then, under 19, that if there's a change, this would be the final plans, which would be the final plans approved by the subsidizing agency, and to your point, they could deviate slightly from the as-built. So, we could add in, under 19, or maybe we just say, under 17, the final plans and as-built plans shall include, would that copy, would that cover everything under 17?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, that works. All right.
And should the copy be 11 by 17 or 24 by 36?
24 by 36. We want a full-size plan.
So, it's 24 by 36?
So, you want one set of full-size plan and one set of reduced plans, maybe I misread, maybe it should be 11 by 17? Because you're right, we don't get squares.
Okay, thanks.
All right, moving on to page 10. Does anybody have any comments on page 10? Page 11?
Mr. Chair, before we move to page 11, I just had one question or comment for you and for counsel, if we may. If in condition 19, in the red, where the red sentence starts, it's the as-built plans must show the entire site drainage system, the only thing we'd ask there is to, this is lawyer speak, define terms if we could delete site replacement property, capital P property.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, Cal?
That's fine.
Okay. Let's go back to we did page 10, page 11. Does anybody have any concerns? No, it's all. Page 12. Yeah, that's all. These are all standard things with a regular, any 40B, correct?
Exactly.
Because I remember seeing these conditions in a bunch of other ones.
Yes. The only thing new then no, I'm ahead of myself, I'll wait.
On page 13, Michael, you had some concerns about the fire department's drivelines, lanes? I had read my notes earlier today that you had questioned 24 feet, and you wanted it 25?
But I think they already, they already, but yes.
Yes, I just want to make sure that he gets his opportunity to.
Question here?
Yes, sir.
I take the answer to this is yes, but you're relocating hydrants?
Correct.
Everyone? Yes, okay. And then, but they're gonna remain on the right side of the driveway as you drive in? You haven't shifted sides of the road?
No, no, we haven't.
All right, because it says here on the right side, I just want to make sure that that's still your plan. Well, from the entrance, it says. You guys designed it, not me.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, the hydrants are all around the perimeter of the building, out at the edge of the driveline?
On the right.
Facing which way?
This isn't too technical, you know, I'm driving in there, I'm a stranger, are they on the right or the left?
If you drive counterclockwise, they're on the right. Am I misunderstanding the question?
Let me just, I don't, maybe not, maybe, it's probably me, it just says hydrant spacing be no more than 500 feet in residential sections, okay? Located on the right side of the street from entrance. If you could say yes to that, good.
It's a little bit different, because it's not a formal street, right? So, there's a 360-degree road around the building. So, if you're going counterclockwise, they're all on your right, if you're going clockwise, they're all on your left. So, we've showed the fire truck can get around, and we've showed the fire department where they are, and they said they're good with the site plan.
So, then, if I may, the hydrants are located on the same side of the drive aisle, if you will, as the building?
Correct.
Would that be better to word it that way?
I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck here, I just wanted to have it right, and no one seems to know which is right or wrong.
And we will work with the fire department as the building design advances. If they need changes to the hydrant locations, we're happy to adjust them. We think they meet all their requirements, and they had no comments on them, so we feel like they're in the right spots, but we're happy to work with them and get them, if there's a better spot, that they see as the project design advances.
You have that on a recording, right? This is just cut and paste out of the diagram. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Page 14, we've gone through.
Mr. Chair, before you go too far, can I just confirm the roadway, or what we should probably call the drive aisle width? Is it 24 feet wide or 25 feet wide? 25?
Ours are 25.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, what the driveline, and that was one of Michael's questions in a previous meeting. Okay, so, let's go to page 15, any?
And then, if I may, sorry, just to add to that, so, based on our prior conversation, I've added a new subparagraph D. That would say the fire chief or his designee shall approve the final location of all fire hydrants on the property.
So, on 15, I can assume that 42, 43, 44 all address Beals and Thomas concerns?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, page 16, we have some. Would you like to explain number 48 and 49, Carolyn? Would you like to explain number forty-eight and forty-nine, Carolyn?
Again, those were either from the latest Beals and Thomas report or from the Department of Public Works. I believe forty-eight and forty-nine were actually DPW.
Yes. Page seventeen is just a continuance of some of that language, and it talks about the booster pump. And then we get down to...
Carolyn, on that subject, on the booster pump?
Yes.
Is there anywhere in here, I didn't see it, was we're tying, that we would tie that that's up and running before any occupancies happen?
I think that goes without saying, but I'm certainly happy to add a condition in.
Yes, please.
They don't have working water and sewer. I don't think they're going to get an occupancy permit, but we can certainly say that the water booster pump station must be operational before any occupancy permits are issued?
Yeah.
Okay.
And-
Then, if by your memory, 'cause I didn't see it back in one of the former pages, Beals and Thomas made a comment about the sediment in those settling pools that belong to the whole development. Is there anything in there about those?
I think we just covered, I think Mr. O'Reilly just talked about that.
Yeah, I think that was forty-two and forty-three, forty-four, up above.
Yes. So forty-two is requiring the cleaning of the accumulated sediment in the four bay?
What, I know-
Yeah, I can see it, you know.
We made Oasis talk about water use for watering, for irrigation, for plants and everything. What are we doing about that?
I don't think we have addressed irrigation, to be honest, so...
Peter, did we make them drive their own well for just that?
Well, they did.
Yeah.
If we made them, they did.
I don't think we made them.
No, I think they offered to do it. They offered to 'cause of the water situation over there. Sorry, should've had that. Yeah, they did it.
That's a concern about sprinklers and use for all of the landscaping and stuff. And I don't know what this board wants to do, how they want to address that.
And, Mr. Chair, may I go back to another issue we talked about just a moment ago, related to the MOA with the town? And tying that to the certificate of occupancy?
Have you got the other one?
Yes, that's on.
Okay.
If I'm, I can speak up if you need me to.
Yeah, you're gonna have to speak louder.
I could try. So on the MOA, there are deadlines in there related to the certificate of occupancy. However, if we haven't hit completion before certificate of occupancy, there's a provision that allows the applicant to escrow funds so that they could have the balance of the funds put into escrow to see that it would be complete, but we'd be able to get a certificate of occupancy at that time. So I just don't want there to be conflicting terms in the conditions of the permit along with the terms of the MOA. So to the extent we can match up those deadlines, that would be helpful to all, I think.
Or if I may, maybe it's easier to say that compliance with the MOA shall be demonstrated prior to any, the issuance of any occupancy permit. So that way, if you chose to go the escrow route, we've confirmed that we have the funds and-
Fine, fine. We're just trying to get it all.
So where are we now? Just a question?
Yes, please.
So did you, you haven't, you hear us talking about irrigation, but you don't have any particular thoughts on that? You're gonna run it off your water system?
No, we would plan to drill an irrigation well to water the grass. We wouldn't be off town water.
That would be marvelous, 'cause we know what the water situation is over there. And it's not good.
Understood.
Okay.
Yes, do we need, can you incorporate that language?
Yes. The applicant should not use town water for irrigation purposes.
Okay, we did. 'Cause that was, we even went as far as worrying about evaporation in the pool. Okay, page seventeen, there is some language. Number sixty, the applicant should provide backflow protection in the water service. Any comments on this page?
Last one, the electrical?
Yeah, I see that. And I assume you can restrict it for residents only, but-
And our parking lots are for residents only and guests, so, you know-
Hey, I don't care.
Residents and guests, I think, would be, you know, it wouldn't be-
It's you guys that have to-
Commercial use, like outside Starbucks, they call any place.
Yeah, it's you guys that have to settle the disputes. And that's another question, is it still gonna be assigned parking?
I don't think we're gonna do assigned parking anymore. We may, we may choose to, but I don't, that's not the plan currently. That was really a plan when we were looking at narrower spaces, and there was a comment-
As long as the ten-foot parking places, it's fine?
We heard you.
Any other questions, Carolyn?
No.
Tom, do you have any questions? Okay, I think-
So if I may, Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be typically you would vote on the waivers first and then vote on the comprehensive permit as a whole. I don't know whether you want to vote on the waivers as a slate, you certainly could do that, or vote on them individually, whatever you choose.
Why don't we vote on the waivers as a whole and then the comprehensive permit as a whole? And I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. Okay, so in hearing Carolyn's advice, I await a motion.
I would make a motion regarding case four-one-six-eight, that we approve the waivers that have been presented to us and agreed to by us.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Condon, a second by Mr. Wallace, to approve the waivers as stated and read. All those in favor? Oh, let's do this voice vote, Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Yes. Kevin?
Michael?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the waivers are a five-zero vote. Now, I await a motion on the comprehensive permit, number forty-one sixty-eight.
I have motioned that we approve case number forty-one sixty-eight with all the waivers.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
And so the second is Peter? And the motion is to approve... Case sixty-one sixty-eight. Oh, yes. I have motion by Michael and a second by Peter to approve case number forty-one sixty-eight, the comprehensive permit. All those in favor, Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes, here.
And I am also yes, so that is a five-o affirmative vote.
Thank you very much for your time.
Spend a lot of time, please, talking to Carolyn so that we get all these little issues ironed out. I appreciate all that you did to try and help the board out as much as possible.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, you may.
When, if everything goes well, what would you anticipate, your groundbreaking?
Yeah, it would be sometime probably in spring of next year.
Spring?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
To get through all the permits and all that.
Well, what we need to do is finalize the design that's really around all the architect. We've given you preliminary plans, we need to finalize those plans. The other thing that we're tracking very closely is the design of the pump station, which the town's working on. So we're getting documents from the town and their consultant Apex to make sure that that's designed as well so we can start that construction at the same time that we start the building construction.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Carolyn?
I do not. I will be in touch tomorrow. I will get this cleaned up for you.
Thank you. That concludes case number forty-one sixty-eight. I do not believe we have any other business before the board this evening, so I await a motion.
I would entertain a motion to-
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All, everybody is a second, all those in favor, aye.
With a thank you to Carolyn for your work on this.
Carolyn, thank you very much. Thank you folks for coming and spending the time to find out what we have to do. And be prepared, because there's a couple more of these coming right behind us. So I'm sure some of you will be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.